Thank you, everyone. Welcome to this special session A, which is highlighting some Bank of England data sets that we think could be used for research purposes. We have three papers. Each presenter will have 20 minutes, after which there will be a 10-minute spot for questions. Please feel free to use the Q and A facility at the bottom of your screen to ask the questions as we go along. And in that 10 minutes, our presenters will aim to answer as much as they can. We will unmute you if your question is chosen to be answered, i.e. if there's enough time. When you speak, please could you give your name and affiliation? And the presenter will then answer your question. Please also note that this session is being recorded. So with that introduction, I'd like to hand over to David Bolat, our first presenter.
Thank you very much, Sally, for that introduction. I know I'm among friends because this group has self-selected in the middle of the week to hear about the 1847 financial crisis. Nothing better that you have to do. So it's easy among fellow colleagues. So my presentation today is going to be based on a few different... principally, the first one of my co-authored by Mike Anson, Killian Wright, and Ryland Thomas. But my presentation is going to go both broader and deeper than what's contained in the published paper. It's going to be broader in the sense that I want to take the opportunity afforded by the panel's team to alert you, make you aware of some of the historical data sets that the bank makes available for search, in case that helps it to you. And I also want to go deeper in that I'm going to be presenting some bill-level regression results that were not previously published. So here are my key takeaways from the presentation for you today. First of all, there's a lot of valuable bank data publicly available for researchers, and I'll point you in that direction very shortly. Second, the bank broadly acted according to Badgett's rule before Badgett set those rules out in Lombard Street. I'll explain what Badgett's rule is very shortly. Third, during the 1847 financial crisis, the bank purchased securities according to standard impersonal criteria, but it did so on variable terms reflecting differences in the perceived creditworthiness of counterparties. And last but not least, some aspects of what has been called unconventional central bank policy recently, such as asset purchases and lender-of-last-resort facilities for non-bank financial intermediaries, sometimes called shadow banks, actually were quite common historically. So many of you will be aware of the bank's role in setting interest rates, in supervising and regulating banks, overseeing the payment system, and so on. What I think is less appreciated is that the bank contributes mightily to the data commons, both data that's useful for markets, for researchers, and for the general public. I'd like to highlight in particular the last three data series here on the slide, which are all byproducts of the research I'm going to be talking to you through this afternoon. And this data is publicly available for your use. So the first is an Excel workbook we put together of the bank's balance sheets on both an annual and weekly frequency. The annual data goes back almost to the bank's founding, and the weekly series starts in 1844. Second, we also produced another financial statement. This is a semi-annual series of the bank's net income and interest income over the period that is of particular concern in our research, 1845 to 1870. And last but not least, really, the crown jewel here is that we transcribed the daily transactional ledgers from select crisis years, so in 1847, '57, '66, and 1914. All of these resources are available online, and they all exist in an analytically tractable form. Now, of course, a lot of our historical data still exists in sort of physical form. Indeed, I think of our archives as being the original big data problem in a couple of senses. First of all, as you can tell, these ledgers are quite unwieldy. You see my co-author and colleague, Mike Anson, who's the head of the bank's archives, really struggling there with one of those ledgers. And the archival data is also voluminous. There are close to 100,000 items physically stored on two and a half miles of shelving. I'm told by Mike that that's about 13 times the height of the shard here in London. So our research started from a very basic question, which was, when did the bank begin to act as a lender of last resort to the financial system? And even more precisely, the question that we asked was, did the bank apply Badgett's rule before it was coined? So many of you will know Walter Badgett, who was the first editor of The Economist. He also wrote a book in 1873 called Lombard Street. And in that book, he said, "What the Bank of England should do in a financial crisis is lend freely, do so at a penalty rate, and against good securities." And those kind of three principles in tandem form Badgett's rule, which has been taken as sort of wisdom for central bankers ever since, even though it was somewhat controversial in his day. And so to kind of get to the punchline, what do we find? The answer is yes, the bank was acting as a lender of last resort before Badgett published his book, but not always pristinely, certainly not in 1847 entirely. But over time, its behaviour as a lender of last resort improved in 1857 and 1866. And it's precisely because 1847 is something of a hinge that it makes for a very interesting case study. So as a first approach to getting at this question, was the bank acting as a lender of last resort before Lombard Street was published? We can look at some of those financial statements that we've transcribed, so the balance sheet and the P and L series I mentioned previously. And what you can see here clearly is that the volume of private sector loans and security purchases do tick up during various crises, including in 1847. So kind of tick on this regard in terms of the lending freely criteria for a lender of last resort. What about a penalty rate? Well, you can see in 1847, the bank rate does increase relative to the years immediately preceding 1847, and then in the year after. But what you'll also take note of in this chart is the fact that for a very long period of time, bank rate didn't change. And this was because of usury laws that were on the books, which capped interest rates at 6% for the bank's first 20 years of existence, and then 5% from 1714 to 1833. We sometimes call this current period lower for longer. I kind of think of the 1714 to 1833 period as sort of elevated for an epoch. In 1833, the usury laws are repealed. And of course, that means the bank can set interest rates, or set its own rate, much higher than the previous usury limit. But I think more importantly, you see sort of the volatility in the series, which shows that the bank is getting to experiment a bit in maneuvering its rate much more than in the previous period up until 1833. So lending freely, tick; penalty rate, tick. What about good securities? Well, to really assess that, we need to understand something about the UK financial system after 1833 and circa 1847. And the key security at the heart of financial markets, really throughout the 19th century, was the Bill of Exchange. And these were most often literally a bill that arose in the exchange in the sale of goods and services. So for example, a wholesaler might sell some goods to a retailer. And of course, the retailer can't pay for those goods in advance because they need to sell those goods to their customers. So it's a classic chicken-and-egg problem. So what the wholesaler might do is send those goods over along with a bill documenting the credit. They would draw it up. That's why they were called the drawer. And then the retailer would send back that bill. They would sign it. And in doing so, that was showing that they had accepted that they owed this debt. That's why they were referred to as an acceptor. And then in a few months' time, after maybe those goods had been sold, the retailer would have the cash, and they'd transmit it to the seller-stroke-drawer. But of course, that seller-stroke-drawer, the wholesaler, might not want to wait for cash from the retailer. And so they might go to their local banker and discount that bill. And what discounting meant is that the bank would outright purchase that Bill of Exchange. But they would do so at a discount on its face value. So the interest rate was 6%. That meant a £100 bill would get discounted, and the wholesaler would walk away with £94. Now, that local banker might hold that bill until maturity, but they might also want to have cash themselves, for example, if they needed to pay out depositors. So they had rediscount facilities with discount houses, many of which were based in London. And then from 1833, remember that date we heard about earlier, the discount houses reacquired rediscounting facilities with the Bank of England, the ultimate source of cash. Now, as an aside, what I think is quite interesting here is that what we're seeing in this period is that the bank begins to act as a lender of last resort in many ways in the first instance by directly dealing with non-bank financial intermediaries, which is something that central banks, like the Federal Reserve in the 2007-8 crisis, were actually heavily criticised for with supposedly breaking from tradition. And indeed, the balance sheet of discount houses back then bear somewhat of a resemblance to money market mutual funds now, what are sometimes called shadow banks. So back to the main story. One way we know that the bank lent on good securities is that at least ex post, the levels of bad debt on its books were quite low. You do see a slight tick up there around '47, '57, and '66, but it's still well below 1% of write-offs. The proof of the goodness of the securities was also in the bank's profits. So you can see that the bank's profits increased after each one of these financial crises. And that was because it was earning more income from the fact that it was discounting more, and it was doing so at a penalty rate. As an aside, of course, the bank at the time was a private institution, and it had a policy of paying its profits entirely as dividends. And so in the 1847 period, right after the 1847 crisis, dividends went up 18% year-on-year. So actually, financial crises were something of a boon for the bank's shareholders. It was sort of the ultimate counter-cyclical asset back then. So the balance sheet and the P and L data give us a kind of a first approach of how the bank was behaving in this period. But if we want to get a little bit more nuanced, a little bit more texture, it's useful to go to these daily discount ledgers, which we've transcribed and made available. These daily discount ledgers contain a record of everyone who approached the bank's discount window. It tells us whether their requests were accepted or rejected, tells us the volume and value of the bills they exchanged for cash, as well as the price at which they did so. I won't go through this example in detail, but the key thing to note is that each row in the ledger is telling us about an application to the bank for that applicant to have a packet of bills purchased by the bank. These packets were sort of an amalgamation of different debts. In that sense, they were like a 19th-century version of a CDO. So with the 1847 discount ledger, we've transcribed the full calendar year of observations. There were 310 business days back then. So just over 9,000 packets were submitted. That's how large our dataset is. It represents just under 100,000 bills that had a nominal value back then of £43 million, which is equivalent roughly to £4.5 billion today. Just to say a bit about the 1847 crisis, it was in some way similar to the 2007 crisis in that before the crisis, there was a widely-held perception that monetary stability was sufficient for financial stability. And back then, this took the concrete form of the 1844 Bank Charter Act, which linked the bank's note issuance one-for-one, except for a £14 million fiduciary issue, to its gold reserve. And the idea then was, by linking the notes to a hard anchor, that would limit inflation, and it would also limit overlending, as it was called by financial institutions. So both monetary and financial stability would be assured. Unfortunately, as in 2007, growth in the size and the interconnectivity of financial institutions generated unforeseen risks. I mentioned the emergence of discount houses in the 1830s. This was also the period when partnership banks were beginning to give way to corporate ones. Also, as in 2007-8, the 47 crisis played out in a couple of phases. In the first instance, there was a real economy shock in the form of a bad harvest, along with the pricking of a financial bubble, the unwinding of a railway, share price boom. And then the crisis deepened later in the year, around October, when many financial speculators had bet on another bad harvest. Unfortunately for them, the harvest was good. Another consequence of that was that there was a glut of commodities on the market. Commodity prices fell. That led to many bankruptcies, including, interestingly, the personal bankruptcy of the bank's governor at the time, resulting in his resignation. Now, as we've seen already, the bank stepped in to lend to the market, but the amount it could do so was somewhat limited by the 1844 Charter Act. And because of that, there were fears in the market that the bank would run out of firepower, and this caused panic.
You have five minutes.
Thanks very much. I will try to pick up the pace here. So what do the ledgers tell us about the bank's response to the 47 crisis? Well, we can see that ex post, if not ex ante, the banker operated according to an 80/20 rule, where 80% of the discounts by value went to 20% of applicants in crisis and non-crisis periods. We also see that bank rate was just the headline rate, and that individual discounters received variable rates, some at a premium to bank rate, and indeed, some actually at a discount. And that kind of not discounting at a uniform rate, that was a new policy of the bank that came in in 1845. Again, another reason why this crisis in this period is particularly interesting to study. So what explains these distributional outcomes? What determined if a discounter had their bills purchased or not? There's a debate in the literature about the relative opacity of the discount window, and a debate between those who think that what really mattered was the characteristics of the bills, although there are others who believe that the characters involved in the transaction also made a difference. It's reasonable to conjecture that the counterparties actually did make a difference because, recall, the bills of exchange were unsecured debt. And while they were owed in the first instance by the acceptor, everyone who had held the bill previously, including the discounter, endorsed it and were liable for full payment. So what do we do here? You know, we take a stratified random sample of 1,000 packets, half from crisis and non-crisis weeks, use both a linear probability model and an OLS to basically look at what are the predictors of rejections packets here. I think the most interesting and significant finding is what's not significant. So we find no evidence of relationship lending. So if you were an applicant who had a deposit account previously with the bank or a prior credit line, that didn't mean that you were any less able to get a bill accepted. The other interesting observation is that many bills were rejected because maturity in 1844, the bank basically said that it would not accept a bill that ran longer than 95 days. And you can see here that the average maturity of bills discounted by the bank was well within that. So far, the regressions I've showed you have been at packet level. But of course, these decisions were made at bill level. We know that because about a quarter of the packets had some bills that were accepted, some that were rejected. So in order to do those bill-level regressions, we link the daily discounts ledger, which I've been talking to you about, with another, the discounters within a pawn ledger, and, as it were, unpack the packets. Here's a kind of closer look about what those ledgers look like, featuring one of my favourite counterparties, the Lucky Brothers, who unfortunately were not so lucky because they ended up failing. I'll just skip that slide in the interest of time. But just to say, we also link the daily discount ledgers with the list of bills rejected ledger, which starts on the 25th of August, 1847. Here, with these bill-level regressions, what we do is we again take a stratified random sample of 100 packets, use a linear probability model to identify the bill-level predictors of rejection. And again, our most significant finding is what's not significant. So there's no statistically significant preference for bills linked to BOE directors of the government, so no evidence of insider lending. The occupation of the acceptor doesn't seem to matter. But what does seem to matter is the location of the acceptor, which is statistically significant. Now, there's a huge caveat about that, which is our statistical finding could just be an artifact of the available data. So we unfortunately only have the Threadneedle Street ledgers. The branch ledgers no longer survive. But we know from other sources that 40% of the bank's discount activities in the 1847 crisis happened through its branches. So let me just conclude on an optimistic note. Since we're living in a crisis right now, it's good to know that the crisis of 1847 ended. So this too shall pass. The crisis ended when the government indemnified the bank to break the 1844 Charter Act, which would have meant that the bank could create more notes unbacked by gold reserves. But as it turned out, the bank never had to do that because the announcement itself was sufficient to quell the panic. I think of this as the 19th-century version of Mario Draghi's, you know, sort of comments in the midst of the European sovereign debt crisis, that we will do whatever it takes, and that was sufficient. That's what it took. And in that sense, one of the sort of under-commented theses in Lombard Street by Walter Badgett, I think is vindicated here. Lombard Street stressed not only what a central bank should do during a crisis, adhering to Badgett's rule, as we've discussed, but also what a central bank should do before a crisis, which is to publicly pre-commit and communicate to act in this way. And in that sense, I think the recent emphasis placed on central bank communications again sort of renews an older Bajoshian tradition. With that, very happy to take your questions.
Thank you very much, David. I can't see any questions at the moment, though if our audience did have any, please feel free to put them in the Q and A box at the bottom of your screen. David, while we are waiting, would you just like to remind us where your dataset could be found?
Sure. So I think the slides will be made available on the conference website after, and there are hyperlinks contained therein. But if you just sort of Google "Bank of England research datasets", that will pull up not only these historical datasets, but also some of the others, such as Phil's Decision Maker Panel dataset, which we discussed a little bit later. I should say, for those economic history buffs out there, one really great resource that the bank has created, our colleague and friend Ryland Thomas has just done an incredible job curating something called "A Millennium of Macroeconomic Data", and it is as grand as the title of the workbook is.
Great. There aren't any questions at the moment, but maybe people will have some. So attendees, the conference chat room is there throughout the length of the conference. So please feel free to make contact with David through that or privately through the conference details. Sarah, I think we can then move on now to Sebastian's.
Yes, you can, yes.
Thank you. Our next presenter is Sebastian. Sebastian?
Hi there. I'm waiting a moment for my video to be enabled. And in the meantime, I will share the presentation. Okay, I hope you can see the screen that's being shared here. Thanks very much for the invitation to this conference. Thanks very much, Sally, for introducing me. So my name is Sebastian de Ramon. I work in prudential policy, which is the area of the bank that deals with bank safety to create rules for bank safety in particular. And I'm going to be talking about a recent database. It's also historical, but it's slightly more recent in nature than David's database. So this picture here is to motivate a little bit what is behind this database. Well, the picture shows us is the whole industry, the whole UK banking industry, and how profitable it has been through the last 30 years. These 30 years and the 30 years in which bank prudential regulation has been further formalised, that's not to say that we did not have prudential regulation before. There has been, but in 1989, the Basel Accord was first introduced in the UK. It was agreed internationally. And it became a sort of journey where essentially central banks and other regulatory institutions make these rules for bank safety to evolve, improving them over that period of time. The chart shows that the banking industry is very, very profitable. In fact, it's a very important industry in the UK. And that has been the case. The bank remains profitable except at the times when there is instability. And we can see here periods in the early 90s when housing pricing ensued, the financial crisis, the global financial crisis here, the European crisis. So there are issues here with this industry where the industry actually does not work as it is intended to, or is not able to deliver the profits that investors in banking would want to have. I'm going to argue that through this evolution of the regulation of the last 30 years, we get to the latest crisis, which is COVID-19, in a better position. And I'm going to try to illustrate that with data from the database. So what is prudential regulation and what's regulatory data? The picture here on the left shows the different institutions that over the years have introduced, implemented, and created prudential policy. About those policies, they are concerned with bank health and the ability of banks to weather the risks that they take. The data, the regulatory data or the data related to prudential regulation is key because it is the way to check whether the banks are being able to weather the risks they're taking and whether they are complying with the few rules that they have to comply with. These data are snapshots, so it's like photographs in time of different parts of their exposures, income expenditure. It includes confidential data. The database, in fact, that we will talk about here is confidential because it has data that is only known to the banks themselves and to their supervisors. It includes high and low-frequency data. For example, when you talk about liquidity, there is high-frequency data that is important to know, daily, hourly data. And when we talk about solvency, the snapshots are less frequent. But the data is provided at regular time intervals. But the data is provided at regular time intervals. And the data includes data for the banks themselves, authorized operating banks, and the groups that own them. So the groups that own individual banks also need to report to the regulator. The regulator has changed as the picture on the left is showing. The Bank of England was the original regulator in the period that we cover. The Basel Committee was very involved in the process through setting the rules in international agreements. The Financial Service Authority was a regulator for some time in the middle of the period. And more recently, the European Banking Authority and the Bank of England, of course, are the regulators that issue these rules. Now, hybrid, the database that we're talking about here today stands for Historical Banking Regulatory Database. What this data, the way the data has been constructed is to acquire the data from repositories that are in the Bank of England, several one of them, and merge them together. They're also merged together with supervisory data and insights, which allow the researchers to ensure the data quality and also understanding the data and explaining the data consistency as time series, for example, to what extent they are consistent over time. From those repositories, the data is taken and checked, repaired, and and formed into readable, simple series. The data also comes from several different types of institutions, and these are all mixed together and finally mixed into a single database called Hybrid or HBRD. The hybrid database includes about 1,000 bi-bank indicators. Many of those are regulations, so solvency and the requirements on solvency, liquidity and the requirements on liquidity. Many balance sheet components, because this is about prudential regulation. There's a strong focus on risk, measuring risk. So there's loss of breakdowns per sector, per risk type, per risk measuring. It includes a balance sheet commitment, derivatives, asset quality, and as well profit and loss or income and expenditure accounts. Now, the picture on the left here illustrates again data from the database, and this is an aggregate from the industry. Due to confidentiality, I will not show you individual bank data here, but I will show you aggregates. So this picture shows again the evolution of bank losses, which is also recorded in hybrid. We see that bank losses evolve in many different ways. They're red in those periods where there were crises, in the early 1990s, the financial crisis, of course, very red and for a very long period of time. But you see there are lots of periods in which it's blue, and this is because at the level of individual banks, bank losses are a normal thing. It's part of the of the business. It's a natural occurrence. But it's only sporadic, so it never threatens the bank into failure. At the level of the bank industry, well, the picture illustrates that the bank industry can at some previous be affected in a major way, such as here in the picture in 1990s and 2007, 8, and 9, and after. Those times, their losses are much more widespread, and they can threaten more banks, the stability of more banks, to the extent that they can render them insolvent or illiquid. So those are dangerous periods, especially because many banks are involved, and then that can increase the overall risk of the industry, making it difficult for other banks, for example, to continue lending, because banks don't lend among themselves. And ultimately, at the level of the economy, this can be, can have very, very major consequences, as we remember it did in the 2007, 2008 economic crisis. So prudential regulation is very important in a way that tries to avoid those periods or try to ensure that those periods do not lead into economic consequences. So here, there's a little bit of a history of prudential regulation over this period in the UK. I'm going to illustrate this with the leverage ratio. So the leverage ratio is a reflection of bank solvency. Again, these are aggregates, and I'm aggregating here solvency for major built-in societies, which are the UK savings banks, which lent mostly to for house building or mortgages. And large commercial banks, which are the ones that dominate most of the banking activities in the UK. So we see here it's fairly changeable leverage levels and some periods in which it's been much higher than others. The leverage ratio here, when it's higher, it means when the banks are more solvent. It means it's a time when they are borrowing the least and at the same time, they are doing their activities, creating their assets, generating credit through their own resources. For example, a high period of of solvency is between 2001 and 2004, as well as after 2014, periods of high solvency. The first period that we'll see there is the introduction of the Basel Accord. And that period was a little bit different because, and it's a kind of old world past of this prudential regulation, was the original implementation that only took certain aspects of of risk, in particular, credit risk. And it also did not apply to savings banks, savings banks only until later on in 1994. In 1996, banks have been engaging much more in market activities, and a new measure of risk was introduced for market risk. And banks were required to hold their own resources for those activities. They were not required to do that before. With market risk, internal models were introduced, so the banks were allowed to measure that risk on market activities. The intention there was to allow banks that should know better to measure the risk in the best possible way. There was a change in the regulation infrastructure in the in the UK in 2001. At that point, it was completed, and the FSA took over. At that point, saving banks and commercial banks were much more intertwined in their activities. They were competing for the same markets. And the FSA took a lot of effort into making that regulatory regime consistent for all firms at the same time. The FSA was also involved in the introduction of Basel II. There was a move to improve risk measuring. And in particular, in 2006, introduced internal models to measure credit risk. What we see there, however, is that leverage increased, so the old resources of banks decreased in their activities. And of course, we know that banks had very low resources by the time of 2007, 8 crisis because of that type of regulation that had been imposed. Immertial prudential regulation occurred immediately, increasing those levels very soon. And Basel III was a reform on Basel II that established those rules at an international level, but crucially also introduced stress tests, allowing banks to consider the future in terms of their risk measuring. That meant that banks would be more inclined to hold resources on the basis of possible future problems rather than only looking at past performances. We will go back a little bit more on the idea of procyclicality and counter cyclicality in a moment. So another way of looking at these two points of time here is look at risk-weighted measures of solvency. Okay, these are very important measures and one that banks have to comply with. We look here in 2006 and in 2019, the two years right before the most recent crisis in 2006 and the current crisis, 2020 with COVID. So ratio to risk-weighted assets, it's a capital ratio that is trying to target the most significant risks. So this is very important because that's where most likely the losses will be. In 2006, however, we see that major banks, which were the ones that took the most risk because captured most of the banking activities in the UK, had comparatively fairly low capital with respect to risk-weighted assets. The reason behind that at the time was the idea that large banks could diversify risk. And that was true, but the 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 procyclicality of the regime also induced banks to to underestimate risk and to take too much risk. Smaller banks were a little bit different. They tended to be better capitalized or have more resources to withstand losses. But there were some small banks that also had very, very low resources. Fast forward into 2019, and the major reform in prudential regime has really pushed all banks much higher into holding on resources for for the for the riskiest assets. This also has been much more improved. At the time of 2006, banks could underestimate the risk very much, inducing them to take even more risk. More recently, there are a number of bank stops that prevent banks from underestimating risk. So it keeps at the measure of risk high, even if banks think that internal models point to low risks in the measures. So this picture suggests that banks are better capitalized at the moment than they were in 2006. Another way of looking at something similar here and is the quality of their own resources. So capital or core equity, if you like, CET1, and other types of capital are the resources that banks have to withstand losses. So in this picture, we're looking again at 2006 and 2019. But we're looking at major UK banks, large building societies, which are fairly significant and in some ways riskier banks, and other banks, smaller banks. A low value in this distribution that I'm showing you here will imply that the loss of solvency is low because the amount of CET1, which is a real loss-absorbing type of capital, for example, in the case of major UK banks in 2006, in average, is just over 40%. That means that the rest, the rest of the 60% is supported by other types of capital. So that, those are the type of capital, tier one, alternative tier one, and tier two capital. There are types of capitals that may not be available in a crisis. For example, tier two capital is instruments that can convert into equity, but only when these are triggered. These conversions are triggered in situations of widespread losses. Therefore, the conversion is simply distribute the losses to other sectors. And in that way, do not really reduce the the losses in the economy, but they just transfer them. So that type of capital prevents banks from absorbing their own losses, but they just simply transfer the economy. In that way, they do not absorb losses in banking. Similar thing with the societies. 2006, it was arranged between minus 25 and 75 percentile shown there, which was lower than what we, for example, see in recent times. In 2019, major UK banks, large businesses, societies, and other banks, they're all fairly close. The majority of the capital that they use to withstand losses is around 80% or more. So that allows the banks to be much better prepared to withstand losses.
Sebastian, you have.
Okay, thanks. I'm gonna hurry up a little bit. Very quickly about liquidity regulation. Again, the liquidity regulation is something that has been evolving. There was no international agreement until Basel III that was introduced in 2014 in the in the UK. There were domestic regulation done by the Bank of England, the FSA, which took several forms, which also evolved from, in the early stage, only major banks were subject to that, and other banks were subject to mini regimes that had lots of waivers. So some banks could not have to apply those rules. And the the series in the chart, they show the evolution of the industry-wide net stable funding ratio. This is the ratio between the available liquid or stable funding that banks have to maintain the business and what they require because of the outflows they have. So ideally, that has to be around 100%. We see that through the 90s and early 2000s, those ratios were declining. In particular, the brown line showed that it was declining when we weighted by assets. So the largest banks were increasingly holding fewer and fewer liquid or stable funds. After the crisis, new liquidity regimes were introduced, took into account the failures and you see then the levels shooting up until the international agreement in 2003 is introduced. The new regimes are much more granular, much more complex, and allow to take several views about liquidity. And again, the suggestion here is banks are coming to 2019 with more liquid resources. The final standard that I want to talk to you about here is accounting standards that also changed. So there've been three things through the history of loan note provision. So this is the amount of money that banks put aside to provide for possible losses. In the early time, provisioning decision was left to bank. Maybe that was a good idea. That's why I put it with a question mark. But through the 2000s, there was a change in the criteria introduced by international accounting standards, saying that provision should be when there was evidence, and that was on the back of banks before manipulating provisioning. That made the regime quite procyclical, meaning that banks only would record or allow provisions when there was event of losses. So only when things got wrong, then provisions will start to increase. In at the end of the 2017 financial year, IFRS 9 was introduced, and now there's a mix of two things. One is we take decisions when there is evidence, this current evidence, and we provision more when there is evidence. But we also provision more when we look forward through stress tests and we think that there will be losses in the future. And this has been already showing up in the in the most recent, quite volatile time in the UK. Again, banks then are provisioning more. So just as a summary, hybrid covers 30 years of prudential regulation, a lot of change. I have illustrated through that with the database. The database has a lot of detail. I can look into all these prudential questions. And it shows us that we moved from a light touch regulation, where a lot of less effort was possible, through a much more focused and accurate regulation to measure risk. And I argue that the banks at least get to the start of the COVID-19 crisis with better conditions. There's two references here to this work in case you want to have more information. There's a bank staff work in paper called Hybrid: Historical Banking Regulatory Database Project. And there's a blog that summarizes those findings. Please feel free to contact me or my collaborator in this project, Bill Francis, for any questions.
Great. Thank you so much, Sebastian. Would attendees have any questions for Sebastian or David? For Sebastian or David? Okay, maybe you'd like to think of some, they're always there, ready uh to answer your questions. If we don't have any questions, then um thank you very much, Sebastian. We'll move on to Phil Bang then, please.
Uh, hello everyone. Hopefully um you can hear me okay. Um, so I'm gonna do this presentation by audio only because I don't have a camera on the computer I'm using um to be able to use video. So um, hope that works okay for people. Um, so in this presentation, um, I'm going to talk about how the Bank of England um have used a survey of businesses called the Decision Maker Panel uh to analyze the impact of Covid nineteen on the UK firms. And although the survey is run by the Bank of England, it's a, it's a joint initiative between the bank and the co-authors listed here from Stanford and Nottingham Universities. But everything I say in this presentation uh just represents the views of the authors, not the bank or any of its policy committees. So there'll be two parts to the presentation. In the first part, I'll give you an overview of the Decision Maker Panel uh survey. And then in the second, I'll talk about how we've used it to analyze the impact of coro, the coronavirus pandemic on, on businesses. So starting off with the overview, so the, the DMP survey was launched in August twenty sixteen by the Bank of England in partnership with Stanford and Nottingham Universities. Although we also receive funding from the ESRC. It's a monthly five to ten minute uh survey of businesses that's carried out online. And it asks about current and expected uh future business conditions. So our initial motivation for starting the survey was primarily to collect information on Brexit and how that was affecting businesses. And in order to get the, get it off the ground quickly after the Brexit vote, we, we borrowed heavily from the Atlanta Fed's Survey of Business Uncertainty in the US, uh which our co-author Nick Bloom is also involved in. Uh, the sampling frame for the DMP survey is a, a population of forty eight thousand independent businesses that have at least ten employees and some basic accounting data in the Bureau of Van Dyke uh database of company accounts. And uh firms are selected at random from this sampling frame and they're invited to join our panel by a recruitment team who are based at the University of Nottingham. So we have a panel of around um eight thousand firms and we typically get around three thousand responses each month. I think the, the DMP survey has a number of advantages, um which make it useful for both policy analysis and for research. So it's a large uh survey and it's representative. It's completed by senior people within businesses and matches other data sources reasonably well, where you can make comparisons. But I think one of the main advantages of the Decision Maker Panel relative to other business surveys is that it asks more quantitative questions. So we don't typically ask people just whether things are expected to get better or worse. We ask them by how much. And I think that's been particularly useful during the coronavirus pandemic, where nearly all firms have been affected to some extent. But um where the magnitude of those effects has varied a lot between um different firms and, and industries. A second van, a second advantage of the um, the DMP survey is that it's forward-looking. And um, in particular, we collect data on the distribution of expectations, not just um most likely outcomes. I'll say a bit more about um how we do that in a minute. But in general, the survey is very flexible and can be adapted to um collect data on sort of live policy issues. It's also timely uh with results um available to policymakers at the bank within days of the survey closing. And we, we publish aggregated data on the bank's website um in less than two weeks after each survey closes. So I'll elaborate on these points a bit more over the next few slides, starting with the size of the survey. We gradually built the survey up after launching it in twenty sixteen to around three thousand responses a month um by the start of twenty nineteen. And that, the number of response, monthly responses has been fairly stable since then. So the response rate to um, to lots of surveys has been affected by Covid. And um our number of responses fell by about fifteen percent in March twenty twenty, when the, when the Covid shock first hit. Um, but it has since recovered and it's now only about five percent um where it was uh at the start of twenty twenty. So overall, we still feel our, our response rates held up relatively well, actually. And that the full, and the full that we have seen isn't heavily concentrated in any sort of particular sector and in particular, uh in sectors that have been heavily badly affected by Covid. So things holding up quite well might, might partly be because um we're already uh established as an online survey before the shock hit. Um, and you know, with people working from home and things, the online mode of delivery um still works. So um, we have a good coverage of different industries, as you can see from the chart on the left. Uh, and also we have good, good uh coverage of, of different firm sizes shown in the chart on the right. So when, we're a bit overweight in large firms um relative to the business register. But um, there are just a lot of small firms out there and our data are weighted to match the business register, both in terms of um industry and um firm size. About three quarters of our panel members are the CFO or the finance director of the business that they represent. Of the, the other quarter, about half of them are the CEO and the rest are sort of other managers within the business. So in general, these are senior people who um should have a good overview of the business, know it well and be able to give us good quality data. Uh, the charts on this next slide show um that uh DMP data on the sales and employment match up relatively well with equivalent data for company accounts for the same firms. So this is uh where comparable data are available. Our survey has um a rotating three-panel structure. And what that means is that we have three questionnaires each month. And over the course of a quarter, each firm in the survey receives all three questionnaires. So the reason for having these three panels is to try and keep each monthly survey short, uh to encourage people to respond to it. So it's only meant to take um between five and ten minutes to respond to each, each survey. But this sort of rotating panel approach also allows us to get a regular flow of data each month across a sort of quite a wide range of topics. Since the survey started, we've included regular questions on sales, prices, employment and investment. So these questions ask about uh growth in each variable over the last year. Um, but also about the uh, the distribution of um expected growth for the next year. And using this, we can calculate uh a mean, a median and a standard deviation of um expected growth uh for each firm. So the next few slides will just sort of um show you how we do this, using sales as an example. So firstly, we um, we ask about the level of sales in the, in the last complete quarter. Then the next question is um about how uh that compares to sales in the sort of the same quarter a year earlier. So they give us a percentage growth rate here. We then ask them about their expectations uh for growth between the latest quarter and the same quarter a year ahead. And the way that we do this is to ask uh them to define five scenarios for, in this case, sales growth. So there's a lowest scenario, a low, a medium, a high and a highest scenario. And this is all discretion of the, the sort of panel member, what they sort of enter for each of these um scenarios. But uh, we carry forward the uh, the responses that the answers have highlighted in the box here to the next question. Um, and we ask the respondents to attach probabilities to each scenario, where the probabilities must add up to a hundred percent. So the combination of the scenarios and the associated, associated probabilities gives us an approximation of the distribution um for each firm. So in this case, sales growth. So one of the, um, one of the novel things here is that uh we ask the respondent to define their own scenarios. We don't give them fixed bins to attach probabilities to. I think that's um partly because the, the right bins would vary a lot between different types of firms. Uh, and this is um one of a number of examples of how we benefited from a lot of the testing that was done by the Atlanta Fed uh in their survey. As well as these regular questions, we have special questions in each survey on current policy issues. Some of these have been asked a number of times, others we may just ask once, but um obviously they can change as policy issues change. Since the start of the survey, many of our special questions have been about Brexit, but um more recently, they've been more focused on the impact of Covid nineteen. And that, that's what I'm going to talk about in the rest of the presentation. So there are two ways in which we've used the um, the DMP survey to try and assess the impact of Covid on businesses. The first is um by using a set of questions where we've asked firms about the marginal impact um onto various aspects of their business. And uh, these questions have, so these ask for a point estimate and uh for in each quarter over the next year. And they typically take the form of sort of saying, relative to what would have, relative to what would otherwise have happened, what's your best guess for the impact of Covid nineteen on, for example, the sales of your business? Um, but we've also asked this about other variables such as employment hours, employees furloughed, investment and production capacity and unit costs too. And then the second approach is based on the regular questions where we only have expected year ahead growth, not quarter by quarter estimates. And we need to assume that all recent changes in the distribution are Covid-related. But um, it means we can assess the impact on the full distribution, not just a central estimate. And in particular, we can analyze different moments of the distribution and therefore calculate measures um of uncertainty and skewness. But starting off with them, the direct questions on Covid impacts. So this chart summarizes the latest data from the, the August survey. Uh, the expected impacts on sales are shown in blue. So sales are estimated to have been about thirty percent lower than they would have been in twenty twenty Q two. Uh, a significant recovery is expected between Q two and Q three. Um, but after that, the pace of recovery is expected to be slower. And by the middle of next year, sales are still thought, expected to be around five percent uh lower than they would have otherwise been. Um, although these sort of sales impacts were extremely large, the latest impacts aren't quite as bad as the, they were uh expected to be at the um, the height of the pandemic. So then this next chart just shows you how sales expectations have been revised. Um, so in April, shown by the black cross here, firms expected their sales to fall by um over forty percent in Q two. That's been kind of revised up through different surveys. The latest data are shown in red. So over the, over time, firms have become a bit less pessimistic about the near term, although obviously the, the impact's still very big. Um, but changes to expectations for this all for next year uh have changed much less. Going back to my sort of summary chart.
Um, you have about six to seven minutes left. Please, could I request attendees to turn off their videos? Uh, I think someone has it on. Um, but Phil, you have seven minutes.
Okay, thank you. Um, so yeah, so the um, the impact on investment is shown here in gray. That was a, a little bit larger than the sales impact in Q two. But um, investment is to expect it to recover significantly slower uh than uh sales is, as perhaps as firms remain cautious. Unit costs are reported to have increased as a result of businesses having to implement social distancing measures and having to buy PPE and sort of other measures to contain the spread of Covid. That's shown by the green line here. So that, these effects on unit costs are expected to peak in Q three and then gradually decline. But um, they're still expected to be about five percent higher than they would have been by the middle of next year. The final line here is employment in orange. The profile here is a bit different uh to sales. It's more persistent. Um, that's a bit clearer if you zoom in. So um, businesses reported that in Q two, um, the impact on employment was just under five percent. Um, so employment was about five percent lower than it would have been. But that employment impact sort of continues to build through the second half of the year to a peak of um around eight percent in Q four, despite of sales recovering over this period. Um, so that those additional job losses are potentially related to this, the wind down of the um, the government's job retention scheme. This next chart shows how around thirty five percent of employees, firms in the DMP were estimated to be non-furlough under that scheme back at the peak in April. Um, that's the, the red bars here. That's gradually falling. And the estimate to be down to twelve percent in August. And these, these estimates of the number of workers on furlough match pretty well with um the administrative data on the use of the furlough scheme um from HMRC. In terms of um how the pandemic's affected overall labor input, you can see from uh this next chart that the workers being on furlough made the biggest contribution to overall uh reduction in total hours worked in, in twenty twenty Q two. This assumes that people on the furlough work no hours. Um, so that the, the largest contribution was from furlough, we've shown by the, the blue bars. But um, there were also some smaller contributions from lower employment and from active employees working um fewer hours too. As we move forward, total hours worked are expected to recover. But as we move into next year, these sort of more temporary ways of reducing labor input are expected to faded away. And so that um, almost all of the reduction in total hours worked will be, is expected to be from, from lower heads employment. Uh, there were also some big differences uh in these Covid impacts by sector. On this chart, I've grouped uh industries with fairly similar impacts together. So highly consumer-facing uh industries shown in red, because this is things like um accommodation of food, recreational services, passenger transport and um also non-food wholesale and retail. Essential services um include utilities, health, um food production and retail uh in yellow. And then we have non-food manufacturing construction in blue. And finally, it's of less consumer-facing services in green, which is but all of the services, but primarily business services. Um, but I mean, what the chart shows is that um highly face, uh consumer-facing industries saw the largest falls in sales in Q two with um essential services least affected. Sales are expected to recover across all sectors, but um the highly consumer-facing services expect to remain worst affected. Looking at the same uh cut of the data on employment, you see also that the largest impacts of unemployment have so far estimated to have been in these highly consumer-facing industries. But these, this group also expects um the largest falls in employment in the second half of twenty twenty, by which I mean sort of between twenty twenty Q two and, and Q four. So the slide in this section so far have been on all on the sort of most likely Covid impacts. The last few slides are, are on the distribution of expectations. So this slide shows the distribution of expected year ahead sales growth that we derived uh from our survey responses. So data from the May to July surveys here refer to growth in sales between twenty twenty Q one and twenty twenty one Q one. February to April survey data refer to growth in sales between two thousand and nineteen Q four and twenty twenty Q four. So misses this all peak of the pandemic in that it doesn't contain expectations data that relate to twenty twenty Q two or Q three. But there's still some significant effects in the periods that we have data for. So mean and median expected sales growth fell. But the thing I want to just focus a bit more on really was that the shape of the distribution, where probably the most striking feature is how much wider the distribution becomes from April onwards, which is consistent with a, a big increase in uncertainty uh among businesses. And we can calculate a measure of uncertainty based on them, the width of this distribution shown by uh the red line on this next chart. It increased sharply when the Covid shock hits and has remained high since. Um, we can also cross-check that uncertain, uncertainty metric with um an alternative from a very simple approach of just asking panel members um whether the overall level of uncertainty facing a business is high or not. The yellow line here shows the percentage you said uh uncertainty was high or very high in any given month, which, I mean, that tracks the sales uncertainty measure um very closely. Obviously, there are kind of other aspects of uncertainty that this, these sort of measures may not fully capture either, such as uncertainty about how long the Covid pandemic will last. And we've asked, we've collected data on this too. This chart shows how there is a sort of a wide range of views in the latest survey about when the uncertainty created, created by coronavirus will be resolved. Coming back to the sales distribution as well as some uncertainty, we can calculate whether the distribution has become more skewed or not. It's not quite so clear to the eye as the sort of the overall widening, but um the widening has been uh larger at the bottom of the distribution than at the top, which indicates that uh expectations have become more skewed towards um negative outcomes. You can see it better on this chart, looking sort of more directly at a measure of skewness. So the skew turning from positive to negative is shown. So the skew turning from positive to negative is shown on this chart. The risk of a second wave of coronavirus or something like that might be an obvious explanation for expectations becoming, becoming more skewed towards bad outcomes. So to summarize, the Decision Maker Panel is a large and representative survey of UK firms, collecting data for both policy analysis and research. The DMP data, they're quantitative and forward-looking, and include information on the, the distribution of expectations too. I think the survey's been valuable to the Bank of England in helping to understand how the spread of COVID nineteen has been affecting UK businesses. It showed how COVID had a very large impact on UK firms so far, a gradual recovery in sales is expected, but employment is expected to fall further in the second half of twenty twenty. Consumer-facing sectors have been most affected so far, and they, that they expect that to be continue to be the case. Uncertainty rose sharply and expectations became more skewed to the downside. I showed this in the context of sales expectations, but you also see a similar picture if you to look at, it's in employment space too. The last slide just has links to some of the materials that I've drawn on in this presentation, if anyone wants to know more. So I'll, I'll leave it there and happy to take any questions.
Thank you very much, Phil. That was very interesting, and thank you to all the presenters. We have a question from Taka Kawakubo, who would like you to just shed some light on digging into firm heterogeneity in forecasting ability of COVID nineteen impacts in the future and the ability in adjusting their inputs. Some firms are good at predicting and choosing optimal input levels while others are not.
And yeah, so I mean, that, that, that's something that I guess we, we would be able to try and look at within our survey data. So one thing that we, we didn't include in this presentation, but that we have, we have looked at is how good firms are at forecasting sort of different aspects of their business, so from the sort of the regular questions that we include in the survey. And what we find is that in general, firms are able to predict what happens, you know, to different, different parts of the business. They're better at predicting some things than others, so for example, they're better at predicting employment, I think, than sales, but also investment is the sort of the, the thing they're able to predict least well. But also, given we have this approach where we ask about sort of distribution of expectations, we find that firms who are less certain in their future predictions are also worse at making forecasts. So I guess we could, we could sort of adapt that approach, or I'm sure at some point we will then probably look at how well firms sort of predicted them the effects, or how quickly they would recover and the effects of on, on them on COVID nineteen. I guess we have some data on sort of firm inputs that we, we might be able to use. I get, although it is probably more our survey is probably better suited to measuring firm outcomes potentially, but certainly an area we could, we could do more on in the future.
Great, thank you very much. There weren't any other questions? Did any of the attendees have any other questions? Great, thank you all. Thank you to the presenters and thank you to the Economic Measurement Conference for giving us the opportunity to present this work. If there's nothing, then thank you very much, everyone. Thank you.